Good evening. I am calling to order the meeting of the Arlington School Committee for September 25th, 2025. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in person and through the use of Zoom. It's being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI and the meeting is being recorded. Because we may have some members participating by Zoom, we may be doing some of the votes by roll call. Persons wishing to access the meeting using Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. The posted agenda and supporting materials for this meeting are also available on the town's website. Due to open meeting law restrictions, the committee cannot participate in or access Zoom's chat function, while everyone is welcome to observe this meeting. Active remote participation requires advance notice. All participants are asked to activate their camera and should provide their full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. First order of business is public comment. I think Cheryl Miller is our first commenter. Are you online?
Sure.
You're there. Okay, give me one second.
Yes, I'm here.
I gotta read the script. Wait one second. So individuals or groups may address the committee on items of school business. The length of the public comment segment shall normally be no more than 20 minutes. Speakers must identify themselves by name and address and will be allowed up to three minutes to present their material. The chairperson may reduce speaking time if needed. Speakers may offer such objective criticism of the school operations and programs that concerns them, but in public sessions, the committee will not hear personal complaints about school personnel nor against any member of the school community except for the school committee or the superintendent in their capacity. The public is reminded, the school committee does not hold jurisdiction over the performance of school personnel other than the superintendent. Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Cheryl Miller. I live at 10 Thesda Street. I am an autistic parent of two students with disabilities in Arlington. I would like to talk about the strategic plan. I've come before this committee several times to try to get help with things that are happening to my children which are not consistent with the strategic plan and the APS mission and vision statements. I did this because Dr. Homan said repeatedly that she was committed to those values, yet somehow she would never do anything to enforce them. Finally, last week, she told me the truth, that all of these formal statements and email signatures and expensive consultant-developed plans mean nothing. They are hopes and dreams. Hopes and dreams are empty words if you won't step up to make them happen. It's one thing when there are personal hopes and dreams, but APS's hopes and dreams are to eventually stop harming vulnerable children whose families have no way to get away from you. I didn't expect every single practice within APS to change on a dime the moment the strategic plan was made public. I did expect, stupidly, because I trusted Dr. Homan, that when an opportunity arose to change a harmful practice, that that opportunity would be taken. Instead, when it comes to special education, there have been strenuous efforts to avoid changing harmful practices and to avoid listening to stakeholders. There has been a strenuous effort to maintain a status quo which the strategic plan itself identifies as harmful. If you hope and dream of a collaboration between family and school, but do nothing when special education disregards everything a family says about their child; if you hope and dream of transparency, but do nothing when special education refuses to even explain to a family what a proposed evaluation entails; if you hope and dream of an equitable educational environment, but do nothing when a parent who is part of a marginalized community raises biased concerns about the treatment of their child who is part of the same community, then what we're talking about is not really hopes and dreams or values or plans. We're talking about a different set of words that people trot out when they want to seem sympathetic to structural problems, but don't actually want to do anything to solve them. We're talking about thoughts and prayers. Thoughts and prayers are not preludes to action. They are words you say instead of action in order to absolve yourself of the need for action. And that's precisely what this time-consuming, expensive strategic plan is: thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Do we have anyone else for public participation? Okay. Thank you. Next order of business is for Dr. Homan to introduce our new administrators.
All right, everybody. We have a lot of visitors here, and we also have some folks online. Is it possible, Ms. Diggins, to, I don't want to mess anything up, but like show the gallery at the same time, because the slides are perfect. Thank you. So, everyone, could you come up maybe a few at a time? And I will let you introduce yourselves. And I think I got everybody on the slide. We have a number of leaders who I would like the school committee to meet. I would like you all to meet them. Some are new to the APS leadership team altogether. They may have been enrolled in the system prior, but they are new to administration. We have some other leadership team members who are in new roles this year. So why don't we start? You know Mr. Amati. I don't know if you want to maybe begin and just say hi. I'm the new Pierce Principal, but you have to come up here. You have to come up to the mic, and then we'll move down the row and around, and then we'll go to the folks who are online.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all.
How's it going?
It's going great. I have two new folks right here that will say hello to you in just a moment.
Come on up, Jen and John. Why don't you tell the school committee your name, your role, something you're enjoying so far.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jen Lambertz. I am the Special Ed Coordinator and Assistant Principal at The Gibbs. Something that I am enjoying so far is, I think, our staff and community at The Gibbs.
Hi, I'm John Emerald. I am the other new Assistant Principal at The Gibbs. One thing I'm enjoying so far is just, I think, just being around The Gibbs and seeing how it's a little bit different from the high school where I spent most of my career and stuff.
Thanks, Gibson.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Garlington, come on up. You too.
I'm Scott Garlington. I was the interim Assistant Principal at the high school last year, and now I've moved into the Dean role. And I think one thing I'm enjoying is working with students and families, and I don't have to deal with the parking issues like I did as interim Assistant Principal, so that's what I'm enjoying.
Hi, I'm Amanda Donahue. I'm also new to the Dean team at Arlington High School, and I like working with colleagues and students in a new way after shifting out of Special Ed for the last 11 years.
Thank you both. Back row, I can see Adam and Jennifer and Stephanie, and then we'll do online.
Hi, I'm Adam Goodstone. I'm the new Assistant Principal at Stratton Elementary School. I'm so happy to be here in Arlington. One thing that I'm loving is just the sense of camaraderie and teamwork and this ethos of caring that exists at Stratton. I don't know if you've been there. The team is just amazing. Our teachers just love each other, love our students. Our principal is just amazing. I'm learning so much from her, and our SLC program is just amazing. We have a great team in place. It's just a wonderful place to be, and I'm so happy to be here.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Griner, the interim Pierce Principal, and what I'm really enjoying is just the community at Pierce, and that includes the parents, the families, the kids, everyone, and in course, the teachers.
I'm Jen Solnier. I'm the new Director of Nursing. I've been in Arlington for five years full-time and two years part-time before that. I'm really enjoying working with our fantastic team of nurses here in Arlington.
Thank you, everybody. And then we have some folks online. I'm going to go in the order that I have you listed on the slide just for ease. So I believe our first online visitor is Eric. Do you want to unmute and introduce yourself?
I hope you can hear me. I'll check that first.
Yep.
All right, Chris, sorry I'm not there. I didn't think I'd make it back to Arlington in time after picking up my son. Just really having a good time in Arlington and at the Hardee, and just appreciate for sure just being welcomed to be like this. You know, it's hard coming to a new place, but the team has been amazing. The parents have been amazing. Just looking forward to it.
And Phyllis? Or Kevin, actually.
Hi, I'm Phyllis Shea. I just started a few months ago. The one thing I really like about here is how everybody works together, and it's just a great environment to be in. So, thanks.
And Kevin?
Hi, everyone. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. I am the new Assistant Principal at Audison Middle School. Thank you extending the invite for me virtually today. I, it's kind of funny, I was tasked with spearheading and facilitating a committee this year, and the committee that I'm facilitating is our Sense of Belonging Committee at Audison. And it's pretty unique that I already feel a great sense of belonging and have been asked to facilitate this committee with everyone. So we had our first meeting last week, and I've already gotten to see and hear things about Audison that I'm personally feeling about, like, you know, what we have already going for us at Audison in terms of making sure students and staff feel a sense of belonging when they walk in the door. So that's been great. And then the admin team with Principal Rubino and Vice Principal McGlaro and our new Special Director at OMS, Liz Rollins, have all been exceptional to work with, and I feel in very good hands. So thank you for having me.
Thank you all so much for coming. We also have A.C. Breeland, who is the Superintendent Resident, who many of you have met this summer, but she has to be at Harvard this week for their fall get-together. They have in-person classes this week, so she's not able to make it, but you'll be hearing from her, so you'll see her some more. Is there anything?
Anybody have any questions? We're excited you're here. Welcome to Arlington and welcome to your new roles. Some of you have been around for a while, so welcome to your new roles. Excited to see you. Come in anytime you want and come to the school committee meeting.
Thank you all so much. I know you have busy days tomorrow.
Take care. Thanks so much. Okay. Great. Next thing on the agenda is the appointment of the Human Rights Commission recommendations from the school committee, and I'm going to turn it over to Laura.
Hi. So we, the Community Relations Committee, met last week and interviewed several applicants to be our nominee for the Human Rights Commission. One is here in person and one is on Zoom, and we wanted to give them the opportunity to introduce themselves. So Abby Azrael, if you want to come up and just introduce yourself to the committee, that would be great. And you, their statements of interest and resumes are in Novus.
Hi, everyone. Can I, am I being magnified?
You might want to use that one.
Yeah.
The guy in the back will make whatever work's work.
How about, oh, that sounds better.
Sort of like the Wizard of Oz.
I'm Abby Azrael, and as Laura just explained, I've been, I interviewed with the Subcommittee, and I believe they're recommending my placement on the committee, so I can't say what I like best yet because I haven't done it, but I am looking forward very much to this new role.
Thank you. Did anybody have their?
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, your packet came in to the Novus a little late, so I didn't have time to take a look at it. What makes you want to do this?
Well, it feels like a good time, both personally and in the world, to get involved. I have been in Arlington for 12 years, about 12 years. I have a son here at the high school, and my time has opened up recently, mostly because my son doesn't need me as much as he used to, and it feels like that's a good convergence of my availability, my increased availability, and an increased need for people to be thinking about how we can be a community right now. So...
Yeah, it's important to me that this commission is focused on what's going on within the community. And I appreciate the Subcommittee's work to find good candidates and get things going. So welcome. I'll support your nomination.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for me?
Seeing none. Do we take separate votes, or what do you want to do?
Let's do separate votes.
Make the motion.
So I am making a motion to appoint Abby Azrael to be a Commissioner on the Arlington Human Rights Commission, one of our five appointees.
For a three-year term to expire September 30th, 2028.
Yes.
Second.
Any more discussion? I am going to do a roll call. And by the way, I didn't say at the beginning to me, Ms. Morgan is joining us by Zoom, and Dr. Allison Ampey is not able to join us tonight. And so let's do a roll call. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Nope.
It was very quiet.
I heard very distinctly.
You heard the yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Morgan says yes. That's a good start. Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Mr. Gittleson?
Yes.
And the chair says yes. Okay, next nominee.
Okay. And you, I believe you will be hearing from Ms. Diggins with the formal, what you need to, what your next steps are. Our next nominee is Michelle Zeitler. She is on Zoom. We also met with her last week and wanted to give her the chance to introduce herself.
Hi, everybody. I'm Michelle Zeitler. I'm so happy to be here virtually, looking at myself twice on the screen. I am a parent of a Hardee student. I have lived in Arlington for about 15 years, and to sort of preemptively answer your question, I have personally wanted to do something formal to be involved in the Arlington community for quite some time now, and particularly, again, as Abby indicated, like, if not now, then when? This is the time to basically move and make things happen, and action really feels like the antidote to despair right now. So this is a wonderful convergence of sort of my personal and professional experience, being able to serve on the commission, and I'm really excited to bring my energy and experience to the role.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Ms. Schlickman?
Not so much as a question, but I did go over your resume and your interest statement. I think you're going to be an outstanding member of the commission.
Oh, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Any more discussion? Do you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I will make a motion to appoint Michelle Zeitler as the Arlington School Committee's, one of our five appointees to the Arlington Human Rights Commission for a three-year term ending September 2028.
September 30th, 2028.
September 30th, 2028.
Second.
Second by Ms. Exton. Any discussion? Okay, we're going to do a roll call. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Got it. Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Ms. Schlickman?
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Congratulations, and we really appreciate you serving on this commission. It's huge help.
Thank you so much.
Can I add one thing for anybody out there listening? We do anticipate having one more Commissioner to appoint in December. They're working, we're working on, the Human Rights Commission is working on timing their appointees right now. So if this is something that anyone out there is interested in, keep your eyes out for an announcement. We will have, go through this process again.
Thank you very much. I forgot two things. I forgot a lot of things probably at the beginning of the meeting, but first, I was supposed to introduce the AA rep, Erica Tonico, the most popular teacher at Arlington High, I understand, from the graduation comments. That is true.
I don't know about most popular, but...
I didn't count them, but she was mentioned a lot.
Mentioned a lot. We're so glad you're here. Thank you. Do you have any updates you want to give us or anything?
I think just my last name is pronounced Tana Shell.
That's a good start. Tana Shell, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
And our student rep is Sophia. How do you pronounce your last name?
DeStefanis.
DeStefanis. Thank you. What's going on at the high school, Sophia?
We had our Counselor Appreciation Event last week, which I would say went really well. We got a lot of thank yous. The counselors seemed pretty excited. We just made a lot of baked goods for them because they've been really busy recently.
Nice.
And we now have a Custodian Appreciation coming up on October 2nd, which, we don't have school, but we'll plan around that. And within school committee, we do a Citizen of the Month at the high school, and we're partnering with the Staff Teachers Appreciation Team to now do a Staff of the Month as well. And we have our pep rally coming up on October 9th, which should be really exciting. And we will be doing our Homecoming theme reveal, leading into Homecoming, which is a tentative date for November 7th. And more student council stuff that we're doing is we're doing a lot of, we have a lot of upcoming, like, meetings with, like, NEMAS, so like the New England and the Northeastern Massachusetts Association of Student Councils, and so there should be some fun events coming up with that.
All right. Great. That sounds like, what do you talk about in the regional meetings?
We, we kind of work on things for our own student council. We come up with different events and ideas that can help teamwork with our council and just make our own schools a better place.
Great. Good stuff. Anybody have any questions? Ms. Schlickman?
So you're going to have a Student of the Month and a Teacher of the Month, right?
Yes.
Maybe for the next report, every month you can bring a picture of the person and announce them in this venue.
A picture? Oh, boy. Sure. I'll definitely give you a name. I don't know if I can get a picture, but sure, we'd love to.
We've got Zoom here, and we've got, we've got beautiful slides that we can make and get that up there, and if people are deserving of an honor, let's shout it out.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Very, very much appreciate that report. Okay, next item on the agenda. You want to move up?
No, we can do the field trip because we have a couple of people here.
Oh, okay. All right. So next item on the agenda is a field trip discussion and possible approval. Dr. Homan, you want to talk about the field trip?
Yes. So we have Ms. Way and Ms. Walker from our Fine and Performing Arts team here to talk about a trip to Quebec. I believe we have done this one in the past once before, and it was hugely popular, and we're looking to do that again, it sounds like. So is there anything either of you want to provide as just a little bit of context about the trip or info about what you'll be doing for the school committee to consider?
Sure. So hi, I'm Mara Walker. I'm the Choral Director at the high school. So every few years, the Performing Arts Department has had the opportunity to offer international trips for our auditioned ensembles at AHS, Madrigal Singers, Jazz Band at Honors Orchestra. And this year, we're proposing this trip that would be open to all of our chorus and instrumental students, just giving the chance for our dedicated musicians to have the opportunity to travel and perform internationally, regardless of which ensemble that they're in. So after researching different festivals, we landed on a Montreal-Quebec City tour that would get the students the cultural and musical benefits of an international trip, like performing in historic venues and doing exchange performances and workshops, but also being a little closer to home, allowing us to travel by motor coach with a larger group. And some highlights of the trip would be a workshop with faculty at McGill University, which has a great music program, in exchange with a school in Montreal, and a concert at Holy Trinity Cathedral in Quebec City. So we would be doing two days in each city, so five days, four nights, and doing sight singing and cultural explorations in both as well.
Terrific. Jing Wei, do you need to add anything, or you're good?
And I just want to echo Ms. Walker. And we traditionally, historically, we've been only bringing students from select groups. Like, three years ago, we went to Italy, Switzerland, and two years ago, we went to Carnegie Hall. Also, still, the Honors Orchestra got to participate, but none of other instrumental students. So this year, we actually started thinking about this back in the spring, but we visited over and over again and landed on this trip. Ms. Walker spent a lot of time talking with Mr. D'Agostino, and it proposes to me, and I'm really excited about this opportunity for all the Performing Arts students. In highlight of this is also the visit of McGill University, because we, every single year, have sent students, Performing Arts students, to McGill because their excellent music program. So I think this is going to serve as a college tour as well, which is great.
Great. Questions from the committee? Ms. Gittleson?
I don't, I'm not sure who this question should go to. I think it sounds like a really exciting trip, and I think it's great that it's inclusive. I was struck when I read the materials that it is significantly more expensive than the trip we sent students on to Quebec last year, like, almost twice as much money. And so since one of the things that I think is so great about sending students to Canada and on a, in a trip that is on motor coach, is that it seems more accessible, I was a little disappointed by that aspect.
Yep. So I do want to correct myself because I think it was the French group that went to Quebec last year. I know that the site was popular, and the fact that we were doing a closer trip was popular, but as Mara was talking, I realized that this is a different trip to Quebec. It's a different agenda. It is the case that some of these domestic trips, because we're actually looking at the possibility of some other ones for eighth grade, are very, they're getting more expensive, and in some cases even with the motor coach, because the transportation is so costly. They're proving just as costly as some of the trips that include a plane flight. We do intend to continue some of our scholarship efforts, and I don't know, Ms. Way, if Papa is involved at all in some of this, but would be very interested in partnering with some of our parent organizations that do fundraising to see if there's a way we can offset costs. I don't know if you have any insights as to what drove cost up for this particular trip. I know transportation's been a big piece of it.
I know there are different tour companies, and so that, that was sort of my question is, obviously, everything's getting more expensive every year, but like, the magnitude of this was pretty significant.
So I can speak. We did get some quotes from different areas and also to different locations in doing this. We did take a Carnegie Hall trip a few years ago, or two years ago, and just three days in New York for us was only about $300 less than this trip. And as we've gone through this, having traveled for like the past, for myself, over a decade with students, I will say that prices have significantly gone up a lot for the past, over the past four or five years for travel. And I will say, and Ms. Way may speak to this as well, but we are planning to partner with our parent association, Papa, to raise as much funding as we can to offer financial assistance to students. And the travel company that we're, that we've worked with provide a few opportunities as well, including like a personal fundraising page similar to GoFundMe, but the page allows people to donate directly into students, their personal trip balance accounts. And then they also offer like a trip giveaway raffle and some scholarship opportunities within the actual organization itself. So those can be additional things on top of what Papa and we will be doing to help raise money, to help for scholarships and assistance.
Okay. Ms. Schlickman, did you ever hand her?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I've looked through this, and this is a magnificent trip, and the fact that we're able to do something that's so culturally meaningful that's all the way close to home, I think it's the kind of thing we're looking to do. So I'd like to move approval.
Second.
We have a motion for approval, second by Ms. Exton. Is there any other, anyone else want to speak to this? Yes, please.
I just, I wanted to say I very much appreciate the inclusivity of all of the, all of the, or more of the musical programs. I know that in the past, and Jing Wei spoke to this, we've given feedback about it only being Honors students, and so thank you for making something available to all of our musical students at AHS.
Any more comments or questions? Okay, we're going to move to a roll call vote. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Ms. Schlick, Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It's a unanimous vote. Trip is approved. Good luck with the fundraising and have a great time.
Thank you so much. So maybe if you do shop around, just stay tuned.
Oh, you know, maybe.
Rianco and I were up there.
Or come up for the concert. It's really only a six-hour drive.
Yeah? Okay, we got one.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, it's great to see you. Okay, thank you very much. You want to move around the agenda?
Yeah. The, you'd have to ask them to...
Well, we're just gonna move around. Do you want to have a vote on this? What do you want to do?
I think, I think that you all have to vote to amend the agenda to hear the presentation sooner.
Okay.
On summer programming.
Okay, we're gonna hear the presentation on summer program. Motion by Mr. Schlickman, second by Ms. Exton. We're gonna do a roll call. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Carden?
Yes.
Schlickman?
Yes.
Gittleson?
Yes.
And I say yes, okay, let's move.
Okay, I will hand this over to Dr. Ford Walker and we'll be talking about the summer programming that we did this summer. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Myself and actually Allison Elmer will be presenting this evening. Can you hear me? Okay. So, I'm super excited to share an update on the programming that we were able to offer this summer. I'll start off with the Title I summer programming. With that particular programming, we were able to offer services to students who receive intervention services during the winter and spring of last school year, and also invitations were based on teacher recommendations. We had a record number of invites that went out to families. For our literacy program, we had 375 students that were invited. We ended up having 76 students who participated in the program. The program was a month-long program and it essentially provided three one-hour sessions to students to receive intensive supports and also just small group support as it related to literacy. Excuse me. For our math program, we also invited the same number of students, so 397 students were invited and about 80 students participated, and it was the same format. So, there were three one-hour sessions that students participated in. For our multilingual learner program, again, this program had essentially the same number of students that participated last year, so it's lower than our Title I program, but we had about 30 to 35 students who participated consistently throughout the summer. And this program was targeted to our students who are newcomers and essentially students who needed additional support in skills in vocabulary building and also...
Sorry, I'm struggling here. I got it. Is this where I'm supposed to be?
No.
No.
Put one back.
Okay. Go.
All right. Students who needed additional support in vocabulary building and also supports in reading, writing, speaking, and listening, those are the students who received invitations to participate in this program. And the goal of the program was to really provide a space where academic skills could be targeted for students, and this program was highly successful in the sense that the students and families reported it as being something that was extremely meaningful, useful, and allowed their students to feel even more connected and a sense of belonging, which is great. And essentially, the program ran also for about a month, Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, the similar format to the Title I program. And the sites of this program were at Thompson this year and at Audison. I'll talk about some of the highlights in terms of the Title I program and this program, but you'll notice that with the site this year, we made a change to have the MLL Summer Learning Program in the same school as our Title I program, and so that was able to provide us with more of an opportunity to have services at one site, at one location, which helped out with some of the operational things that we needed to address this year. Kind of along those lines, I'll finish with sharing a few other bright spots. This year, we were able to offer transportation to students who were interested in participating in ACE programming at the high school. For this first year, we had a small number of students that were able to take advantage of that transportation option, but still, it was a success because we were able to offer that to families and to help a few families that were in need of making sure that students were able to get from one program to the other. And as I mentioned before, we were able to transition the ML program to Thompson as well, which just centralized programming. And finally, another bright spot was that we were able to provide more choice to families. We had a number of families that had a decision in terms of whether or not they would take advantage of ESY programming or Title I programming, and having both of those as options really helped some families, and it helped in terms of scheduling, but also helped in terms of them being able to decide which area they wanted to specialize or have their child take more advantage of, whether literacy or math. Some next steps for our summer learning program, specifically the Title I program, is that we are still working to do a, we're still working and looking to do a better job of coordinating our programming with other programming that's taking place. Right now, some of the feedback that we've been kind of consistently receiving is that the program feels a little disjointed, particularly with the one-hour day format. It's just not convenient for a number of families. And so, we're really looking this year into trying to figure out a format that works and that, number one, can meet the needs of students, but also not be as inconvenient for families. Also, we are working to identify a survey this year that we can get out to families in the fall of this year, so that we can really hear directly from families around what that programming could look like that would better serve families. And then finally, we're looking to adjust the structure of the program. Over the past two years, we've had a certain structure in terms of having two facilitators of the program and also this one-hour kind of drop-in model, and looking into next summer, that will most likely shift and adjust. We're just trying to figure out exactly what that will look like based on the feedback that we hope to get from families and staff. At the high school, we were able to continue to offer the open online courses again this summer, and we use the two platforms to offer a wide variety of college-level courses for students. The length ranged, most of the courses were six weeks, but the length of the courses ranged anywhere from weekly to a number of times per week. We had about three, 103 students participate in the program and they were able to receive between .5 and five credits depending upon the courses that they successfully completed. We were also able to offer in-person programming and that's similar to our program that we were able to offer at K-5, which is a month-long program where students are able to come three days per week, and the courses that we were able to offer ranged from English, math, science, history, and physical education. Same courses that we were able to offer last summer, we're excited that we were able to offer those again this summer, this past summer. We were also able to offer an in-person credit recovery program, and similar to last year, that program was open to students at AHS and students from Minuteman Regional High School as well as Arlington residents who attend private schools were able to participate in this credit recovery program. And the courses were designed to review work that would help students successfully meet the criteria for completing courses and leading to graduation. Also, we were able to offer an online credit recovery program as well. This is similar, actually, it's the same program that we offered last summer, and courses range from algebra, English 9, geometry, physical science, US history, and Spanish And I'll turn it over to Ms. Allison for, Elmer, excuse me, Ms. Elmer, for ESY.
Thank you. So, ESY is the Extended School Year Program and that is for students, eligible students who receive special education services. Different from the Title I programs that Dr. Ford Walker explained, these are individual schedules, individual services for each student based on their IEP. In general, the program runs from, for six weeks from July through August 14th and then up to three hours each day. So, in total, it's about a 72-hour program if you receive all those services. Just kept up some data, data so you can see the last few years around attendance and, oops, it looks like the updated one didn't make it here, but for this most recent one as far, oh, I see, sorry, no, I'm reading it incorrectly, that we had, you know, not shockingly, the largest number of recommendations for elementary K-5, and you'll see that it starts to dip after that. The Gibbs program does have the rising sixth graders as a nice opportunity for kids who are, you know, gonna be transitioning from fifth grade to the Gibbs. They get to preview the school, they are there to learn the building, and we also keep the seventh, the rising seventh graders at Gibbs so that we can be in one location. And then the rising eighth graders similarly, or the rising ninth graders rather, will go on to the high school, get an opportunity to preview that, and that's a smaller number of students in general who are eligible for those services. That's it for questions.
All right, questions? Ms. Schlickman?
Sounds like a lot of great work. I'm looking at some of the sites where the programs were located, Audison and Thompson. Do we have access to air conditioning for the program? Which of these were, which of these weren't?
That's how we choose the buildings. So, we're at Pearson-Gibbs. I don't think any of the buildings could house all of the programs, which is what we, some of the, the issues that she was, Dr. Ford Walker was explaining. So, the ESY program is at Pearson, we take over most of that building. They have the Thompson building and then the Gibbs is for ESY and then Audison uses the other program and so, and then the high school obviously is air-conditioned, so.
We did put some air conditioning in some common spaces, particularly the cafeteria, very recently with some of, so we had gone out to bid with an allocation in capital for air conditioning for Thompson, but the project that was bid out, what came back so expensive that it, capital couldn't come close to covering it. So, we used those funds to try to put some relief in more of the common spaces. We're still working on a plan to build out some more classroom air conditioning there as well as, you know, obviously, doing what we can do to explore our options for air conditioning, the entire building within the scope of what has been proposed and approved by capital. But we're trying to make it so that there's at least relief at some point during your summer day at Thompson, and we keep the kids down off of the third floor for the most part, yes.
Yeah, and we monitored the temperature. We were in touch with the teachers daily, two days in particular where the temperature was over, I believe, 90 or 89, one of those. And we were really, it was really touching, but we were deciding if we were gonna continue the program, actually, on those hot days, but the teachers said that it was okay, they said that the temperature was reasonable and they could continue with the programming. And then one really hot day, it actually ended up being on a Friday when we didn't have programming, so it actually worked out in our favor.
It'd be interesting to see down the line, a little longitudinal on how kids who actually participated in the program fare this year compared to the ones who declined your invitation.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Carden?
Thanks. Were we able to offer transportation from the Piers to the ACE programs?
Transportation? We have transportation for ESY. What the buses do and actually, I think you use them as well, we've been doing for years, is it stops at each elementary school in the morning and so you walk to your neighborhood school. And then we do have students similarly who will, at the end of the program, take the bus over to the ACE programming as well.
Great, thanks. I guess, my only comment is, you know, the programs have looked very similar for the last few years. You know, our strategic plan is focused on focal groups and these focal groups are the ones that are using these programs. So, I do think we, I'm glad to hear that you're finally going to try to reform the Title I programs to see if we can, we can boost the participation, because I think we're missing a huge opportunity to focus on the focal groups and hopefully have, make an impact on closing the achievement gap. The same with the ESY programs, the participation is not as bad, but it hasn't budged. We haven't really figured out if there's a way we can structure these programs better so that they're more convenient for families, so we can get more than 60% participation. So, I, even in the, as well as, I'm glad you're doing it for Title I, but I would suggest also doing it for ESY. Talk to families, see how we can get better participation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So, I know of at least one Audison student who is an incoming ninth grader who was able to participate in the credit recovery at AHS, and I hope that, I understand that the math pathways are under consideration and potentially under review, but I do hope that that sounded like it was a very novel idea that was implemented this summer for that particular student, and I do hope that it's one of the things that can be considered as we continue to offer additional pathways for students. It's certainly conceivable that a student in Math 8 at Audison could be identified in December or January as being a student who really could complete Algebra 1 and move on to Geometry as a ninth grader, but given their course placement at that point in time, it might not be feasible or reasonable to transition them into Algebra 1 at Audison. But given that we offer credit recovery and we are teaching Algebra 1 to students over the summer, providing students the opportunity, who are, you know, identified as being good candidates for completing that over the summer and thus being prepared to go into Geometry, sort of saving them a year of math at Arlington High School, seems like it's something that certainly should be under consideration as you're looking at the math pathways. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Exton?
I just want to echo what Mr. Carden said about trying to increase the participation by finding ways. This feels like a really great opportunity to work, to have the family outreach, I'm not getting the right title, but department to work on how to have a full-day program that is incorporated between REC and ACE and this Title I program and ESY. It seems like something that there are a lot of great minds that could put their heads together and make a full-day, you know, four or five-day-a-week programming for families so that they feel like they can accept these spots that are offered to them and we can really make a difference in 375 students' reading experiences and 397 students' math experiences in APS. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we go back to the, where we were, and this is a discussion of possible approval of job descriptions. Dr. Holman?
Okay, so, we met with CIAA to, because I believe these were reviewed at a summer meeting, these job descriptions, and then sent to CIAA for some additional review. Just as a reminder, this is for revised job descriptions, not vacant jobs, so we're not posting these. But it was a revision of the job description for Director of Excellence, Access, and Opportunity, and a shift of the departmental name for that department and the specialist that is also in that department. We took into account some feedback from members, we made sure that the director's role included the supervision oversight of the Metco program and that we were clear in distinguishing the difference between the role of the specialist, which is sort of building out student programming and working directly with schools and working with teachers at their request versus the director who does a lot more work around compliance and is the district's civil rights coordinator, Title IX coordinator, and bullying contact for buildings when they need it. So, we've brought it back to you and are looking for approval of these two job descriptions so that we can make it officially official.
Any, well, have you put a motion on the table and then a motion?
Move approval to make the, make it officially official.
Second by?
Second.
Ms. Exton, okay, discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, it's unanimous vote. Next is the MAS C delegate. We nominate, we elect a delegate each year. Mr. Schlickman, would you be willing to serve as the delegate for the town?
I would be. I'd also recommend having an alternate as well if somebody else is intending to attend the conference.
Anyone else want, anyone want to be an alternate?
Traditionally, Dr. Allison Ampe has been the alternate.
Let's vote her, she's not here. Okay. So, we have a motion by Mr. Carden to select Doc, Mr. Schlickman and Dr. Allison Ampe as the alternate. There's a second by Ms. Exton, any discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, it's unanimous vote. Next is, Dr. Holman, you want to explain? There's a memorandum on a revolving...
Yes, I can explain this.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, we, there is a revolving account for the AEA and its only allowable purpose at the moment, as I understand it, is to pay the union president's salary. That account only has that as an allowable payment option. We have worked with AEA over the past two years, last year and this year, to pay We have worked with A E A over the past two years, um, last year and this year, to pay for, uh, licenses. We sort of split the cost for Cartwheel so that staff, if they need access to a therapist and they're having, they're on a waitlist and they're having trouble getting access, uh, they can take one of the spots that we've got reserved for staff, um, and get, to get that access quickly. I think this has a huge positive impact. We definitely had staff who took advantage of this last year. We were really grateful to the A E A for offering to split the cost with us, um, because we know that that is not one of our less expensive licenses, but it is one of our, um, more well-used services that we're providing. So, we are, it, one of the challenges we're having though is actually how to receive dollars from A E A so that we can pay this invoice. Um, and so, we're asking that we be able to take a check from A E A to deposit into this revolving account and use this revolving account for expenditures that are mutually agreed upon, um, by A E A and APS only, um, obviously. And we would then have that flexibility instead of needing to sort of have it be a separate, we would need to set up a separate grant account otherwise. Um, we thought that this account could serve this purpose fairly easily, at least for as long as we have this partnership with Cartwheel, um, or have other things that we're sort of jointly paying for, uh, with the union. So, that's the request.
I think the motion would be to, to, to approve the expansion of the A A revolving account for the purposes described in Dr. Holman's letter of September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'm so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, okay. We'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay. I lost the agenda here. Hang on, I'll just go back to the piece of paper.
Calendar.
The calendar, oh boy, okay. We got to talk about the calendar, okay. So, a couple of things. We're going to approve a calendar, right? Do I have that right? I'm back in the agenda. That's good. So, first thing we're going to do is we're going to approve the updated calendar. There's a memo from Dr. Holman. There's a policy suggestion that the superintendent and I cooked up, uh, the other day, uh, that we would send to the Policies and Procedures Subcommittee for further review, discussion and, and the recommendation to the full committee. Um, I think the first thing is, is to vote the new calendars that.
Yeah, can I talk about it for just a second?
Yeah, not too long.
Okay, so that, I won't talk too long. So, the, the calendar that is in your materials, I intended to bring to the first meeting. Um, it has a revision that we made in August because we discovered that there were going to be three early releases at the elementary level in one week. There are a lot of things that we received feedback on with regards to the calendars. Some of them I named in the letter, I didn't name all of them. One of them from staff that I don't know if I explicitly included is not to sort of do a block of conferences from one, from eleven forty-five A M. till, you know, eight P M. I think that gets, um, to be quite long for them. And so, we were looking at how we could adjust this so that we weren't creating three early releases in a week, which I also knew would be untenable for families. Um, we, I, you know, I thought a lot about where to put it. I ultimately asked that we move the evening, we switch the Wednesday and the Thursday. That does create a conflict with a school committee meeting. Um, I am very aware of that and I think there are a number of things about conferences specifically that I'm hopeful mitigate some of the challenges associated with that conflict. Uh, I do think that, you know, that the policy, maybe it's not, maybe we don't need to revise it, maybe we do. I don't know that it is necessarily necessary for the school committee to move, I would not recommend necessarily that we move the meeting on the sixth, um, but we can, obviously. It's, that's up to all of you. But that's the, uh, switch on the calendar that is posted. We've also gone through and made sure that there, that it matches the Google calendar. Um, if you see any more errors, please do let us know and we will fix it right away. But it should match, the live calendar should match this posted calendar, calendar on the website, the calendar in Novus at this point. Um, and there was, oh, and there are, we've discovered a few other conflicts with a junior, like counseling events, um, on Thursday nights. And I think that a discussion about the policy might be helpful also in considering whether or not it would make sense for us to move those. We weren't aware of those until we were having this conversation about these evenings, so.
Okay, so I'm going to just open up for Mr. Schlickman.
Okay, uh, because we're, I guess we're talking about both the, uh, policy and the calendar at the same time. Um, we, we haven't touched the policy, I don't think, since the superintendent has gotten here. Uh, so that she hasn't experienced sort of the reasons why we have the policy and the angst that has caused us to spend countless hours tweaking this over the past, oh, ever since I first came on the committee, twenty-three years, twenty-four years ago. So, this, this has been one of those recurring things. I think that, uh, uh, we can take, take what you cooked up and stew it a while.
Yeah.
Because that would make it aware of why the school committee, it sort of insists on this being part of the, uh, part of the policy manual. Where we've really had problems were, were twofold. One of having a major event in the high school on the same night as a school committee meeting, which made it difficult for people to come to the school committee meeting. And secondly, with, it really shouldn't, it, it's unfair to the committee to have them make a choice between, say, a performance or an event in their child's school and a committee meeting. So, that, that was sort of the impetus behind this. If there are individual conferences can be signed up on different nights, I'm not seeing that as a critical issue, I think, but that's why we have a subcommittee.
Yeah, I think, I think so, I, I guess one thing was, we can make a, we can get one thing done, which is to move that B E A be referred to the, to the Policies and Procedures Subcommittee.
Okay, I moved that B E A be referred to the Policies and Procedures Subcommittee.
And you can take into account what Liz and I wrote in the law. Second, any discussion on that? So, that refers, that just refers our existing policy to the subcommittee. So, we have a motion to refer the existing policy to the subcommittee. Uh, second by, motion by Mr. Schlickman, second by Ms. Exton, roll call, Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, that's referred for, for Mr. Schlickman's Subcommittee to do some work on. Now, the question before us is, is there a desire to move the, the, the meeting on November sixth to November fifth or another date? Does anyone want to do that or talk about it? We're good? Okay. Um, I can just tell you historically, one thing that we've done and that we did a long time, I do remember this with one member, I don't know if any was on the committee at this time, I don't know if it was Mr. Schlickman's break, um, where we had an unwritten rule that we would not take any major votes, uh, if there was a member who was inconvenienced because of a school event with their children. I think, I think that was just, we just did not take, we might have heard presentations, but we did not take any votes other than routine votes. So, that was a solution, uh, when we found ourselves in that situation, um, in the past. That's just an aside. Okay, so there's no desire to move the meeting on, on November sixth. So, the next motion is to approve the, the calendar. Yes? You want to speak, okay.
So, I'm going to vote for the calendar because teachers have made plans, but I just, I, um, I spent a lot of time thinking about this. I'm a teacher, I'm a parent, I'm on the school committee, I'm a community member here, and so I've tried to really look at this through all of these lenses. And so, I'm going to support the calendar because teachers have been told that that's the night that they're having conferences and no teacher wants to have to, to change that. I'm sure they've made their own arrangements for their own families. But it is frustrating for me, um, as a parent, a teacher, a school committee member and a community member, um, because I work and so I need to go to those evening conferences. I can't go to those daytime conferences. And while I appreciate that there are office hours, the office hours are right before school and right after school and I can't make those. And I'm not the only person in this community who has those constraints placed on them. Um, and so, I, I, I just, I think that it's, it's not as simple as, oh, you can go to someone's office hours. Like, we have evening conferences because there are people in this community who can only access their children's teachers on that evening. Um, and so, no, they all, don't all want to come to the school committee meeting, but I think that we need to acknowledge that that's something that, that people are trying to, to balance. Um, and so, as a policy, it is that there aren't to be things in the evening, both for the community but also for school committee members because we are volunteers and we have other things going on.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Exton. Does anyone else want to speak to this at all? Okay, no other, no comments at all? Okay. Uh, the next would be a motion to approve the calendar. So, a move, that's presented motion by Mr. Schlickman?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carden. Now, we have a motion on the table. Does anyone want to speak to this motion at all? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Morgan?
No.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman votes yes. Uh, it is a, a five to one vote. Thank you. Okay, I'll get my thing back up. Uh, next item on the agenda is the superintendent's update.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to start by sharing a few upcoming events. Our last two back-to-school nights will be on Tuesday of next week at Dallin and Brackett. Uh, we're looking forward to seeing those committees there. Um, on October fourth, the L G B T Q I A Plus Rainbow Commission and A P S will host a back-to-school gathering on the A H S front lawn to welcome everybody back, uh, and to have a lot of fun activities, so we hope that we will see you there. There's a Q R code there on the screen for more information if anybody wants to learn a little bit more about that event. Um, we will also be celebrating the official opening of Arlington High School. It feels like we've had lots and lots of official openings because we've opened in phases, but this will be the final one and we will have the unveiling of the, um, the dedication plaque at the high school and do an official ribbon cutting ceremony. Um, and then we will have a public open house in the afternoon on October twenty-fifth. So, if anybody in the community wants to come and see the high school, we will be sharing this widely and letting folks know that that will be an opportunity to come and have a self-guided tour. We also need a lot of volunteers, so if you know anybody who might like to, um, you know, stand and show off parts of the beautiful new high school, please let them know that we'll be looking for volunteers, uh, and they can reach out to anybody on the high school building committee or Ms. Nup and she can put them in contact with the right people. We will also be hosting a visit from the new commissioner who just started, uh, with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on Monday. That is the, this coming Monday, September twenty-ninth. Um, that is the date that statewide accountability outcomes become public and Audison is honored to host both the commissioner and, uh, education leaders from across the state. There will be a press conference on Monday morning in the library and a celebration of outcomes later on that morning. Um, and we will be presenting our district level outcomes to the committee in October, uh, followed by presentations of our school quality plans, which we'll be doing by level this year. So, we'll have all of our elementary, um, folks come, they'll get all of their plans ahead of time and they'll talk through some of their shared goals as well as highlight some individual programming happening at their schools and then we'll do the same for secondary. I have a few updates on some things and then I want to talk a little bit about positions and give some updates based on some, um, questions I've received in budget Subcommittee and at the last meeting. So, starting with enrollments and projections, there are updated enrollments. Uh, I also have updated them since I sent them via email earlier this week. They now include the enrollment in the programs at the secondary level. We didn't have that in the first version and a tally total at the bottom. We also have, uh, received some initial enrollment projections from Sanborn, the, the organization that we're partnering with for projections, uh, but we have asked them to do some G I S level work on those projections because we have some questions about the extent to which, uh, the drive of some of the real estate data that they currently have access to versus what, um, Mr. Feeny and we are aware might be coming as new developments, um, what impact that's having on the projections as well as sort of the reliance on birth rate. We're interested in having them look at turnover rates in individual households. So, we will be connecting them with our, uh, town colleagues to take a look at some G I S level data and so we should get some updated data after they do that level of analysis. We can work with the ones that we have right now in the meantime, um, and I'd be happy to present those if that's the wish of the committee at some point in the near future or we can wait until we get the update. Uh, there was a ruling over the summer, Mahmood versus Taylor, uh, and we've been getting some updated guidance from this, from, um, the state and from, uh, hearing from our colleagues around the state. Right now, um, we have not received a whole lot of requests from families for religious accommodation of content and that was what this ruling was about, but we're working on some guidance based on guidance we've received from Desi. So, it's possible that we'll have something to share on that, uh, and how it works, uh, and with our existing policies surrounding curriculum concerns and accommodations. We also will need to make an update to the handbooks with some language in there that explains, uh, what an accommodation on religious grounds would look like for families and how they would go about achieving that if they needed to request it. There, uh, we are receiving, I, as shared with the committee in the spring, that we had requested, uh, of our legislators, some earmarks for some infrastructural improvements when they had reached out, uh, while they were finalizing the state budget. And we had received some advocacy for earmarks for devices to, um, sort of offset some of the space that we weren't able to get in capital for devices for teachers and for students as well as an earmark for the Thompson elevator project, uh, which is coming in at about a hundred thousand over, uh, in the bids, uh, what we had budgeted in capital. So, the good, the great news is we hadn't heard about it for a while and we were wondering what had happened and whether or not the earmarks would come through. And we heard this week that they are in fact, um, going to come through and that they should be there. We're not sure if both of them will be there. We need to go into the platform and look, uh, and submit some things so that we can do the drawdown, but, uh, we're really hopeful that we'll be able to move forward on these, some of these projects with the state earmarks. Um, and I have an update with regards to administrative hiring as well. Uh, we will be announcing an Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations likely soon, but first we will need to have a special meeting maybe next week to discuss, uh, the finalist candidate that we would like to move forward with and take a look at a contract. So, it's very possible that we, uh, might get an invitation from Mr. Thielman and I, uh, for a meeting next week. Otherwise, I'm very hopeful that we will be finalizing a hire for this important role that, at our next meeting if we don't have a special meeting next week. Uh, but we're very close and very excited to have somebody in this important role. And hiring and budget updates. So, this portion's a little longer and I'm hoping to circle back to it at the next meeting, uh, but we, uh, I did receive a clarification of the request at the last meeting for a full report on positions and budget status. I'm hopeful I can give a more full report at the next meeting and include a full position control schedule, uh, but I am pleased to report that overall we're more fully hired before the start of October than we have been for a really long time. Um, it's really exciting to be as fully staffed as we are at the start of the year. It means that staff have had a better onboarding and it means that they're a little better oriented to, um, Arlington because they started with us. So, um, I'm going to go through the different parts of the change sheet that was in the budget and just give an overview of the staffing and then I'm going to do an overview of all the staffing at the full level and then if there are any questions, please send them in and I will try to incorporate some answers into the presentation that I'll do at the next meeting. Uh, so these were the efficiencies that we planned for in the budget. We have taken all of them into account and they're all accounted for in position control. Um, so, we reduced all our building substitutes, um, down, we're by about four point nine system-wide. Um, we have done some of the, we've done the restructuring and we've, uh, re, sort of reset the librarians, library pair of positions and I'll have, uh, the other half of that in the next set of slides. At Arlington High School, we had more enrollment needs once we received all the course requests, um, than six point oh, so we actually hired seven point four, um, across different departments and you'll be able to see kind of where those landed, um, when you have the full position report. But those were to make sure that our class sizes were reasonable and that we were able to balance all of the courses. Um, we, there was one space, the point two performing arts person who was going to take on that media teacher role, um, resigned and went to another system and we weren't able to backfill. We posted, weren't able to backfill that point two. So, we're going to use those dollars to do stipends and do this as an after-school extracurricular, which is what we've done in the last year. It, this has been an after-school stipend-based extracurricular. We were hoping to incorporate it as a course, um, but because of the resignation and because we didn't have a staff member for the course, uh, we dropped it from the program of study or from the course list and we're doing this as an extracurricular. from the course list, and we're doing this as an extracurricular. We have a group of students who are very excited about that, and I think might still be working on getting somebody into that stipend role. We added a school counselor. We have a special education vacancy right now, but we've posted both of those and intend to fill both of them. And we're also still looking for a custodian. So we have a few vacancies that are resulting in these not being fully staffed up, but we're working on that. At Audison Middle School, we also have a special education teacher vacancy of 1.0, so we're hoping to fill that at some point, either that or it's a reconciliation issue that I'm still working through. And we also have a school counselor. It looks like a 1.2, it looks like a higher add, but Point 2 of that needs to transfer to a grant. So that and that will be even. Right now, it's posting to the general fund, so I just wanted to keep it there and make it visible. So then at the elementary level, these are all the additions we committed to. We have a lot of vacancies for paraprofessionals, I believe, at Monomy right now, and so it doesn't look like we added the Point 8. We did, we're still trying to backfill some of those paraprofessional roles. We did add, I, I said that we're, the 1.4 for the reserve positions is the additional sections, and we'll also add, we've added a bus driver, which I'll explain in just a second. So that would take up easily the 2.0. It's not straight math, like, we've had some things we've needed to add in, paraprofessionals for student services, a bus driver, the additional sections. But we do intend to use the dollars from the reserve positions to accommodate some of those additional needs. And we have not yet filled the administrative assistant position for Thompson, but we are going to, that part-time role that we're going to have, we've worked with Ms. Donato, and she's going to take some hours from that to do some phone calls home on specific projects that she needs that additional administrative support on. So we're not going to fill that position, but we are going to share some of the additional work, work for the admin position we're adding at Central Office. Hardy in the district, there, so I mentioned, we had added a school bus driver in the budget. We were not able to fill that role yet. It is posted. I also approved an additional driver, and that is because that should offset some of the cost of rendering out some of the runs. So the hope is that we can get an additional driver, and that will, then the transportation cost will go down because it costs more for us to contract those runs out than it does for us to hire a bus driver, and we do have the vehicle for that. So we're going to see if we can't hire two bus drivers. And then, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions about these if you have them or if you have them at a later date. We have not filled the town cybersecurity role yet. This is an overview of all of it. So this, these are the changes that were in the budget, minus 19.2, the actual is minus 19.2. We had 43.3 additions. We have filled 35.2 of those. We had 3.1 adjustments and corrections from prior years. We've filled 2.9 of those. When it comes to total positions, overall, we had budgeted for 1,061 on the general fund. We have right now 1,027 or so on the general fund, so we're down about 30.3. Right now, vacancies and pending hires account for about 21 and a half of that, and held positions, the ones that we decided not to fill, account for about seven of those. And so I'm still reconciling the last 2.8, but that's about where we are with regards to hiring, and I'm just trying to make sure, like, this is moving data as we hire people in or as folks resign, and so I'm just making sure that all of these are exact before I give you the full position schedule. If there's anything you'd like to see in that update with regards to the data or reasons why this and not that, or why we're having trouble filling certain positions, I'm happy to provide that if I can get some advance notice because then I have to chase down some of the information so that I can present. But that's the update, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions? Ms. Schlickman?
Moving back to the enrollments, the little yellow squares mean the classes that are a little larger on class size than we would like. And I see, and I'm really pleased to see we only have four of those, and it's just barely over the threshold. My question is, were these cohorts last year, for example, so-and-so school's third grade, last year, how was that second grade? So that's, that's the one question I have, is that if we have an impact, uh, grade level of a school, that, what was the, the status of that particular grade level last year?
So these that are yellow were yellow last year. There was one that was yellow in kindergarten that, like Stratton, moved up into four sections because it was very tight in kindergarten. So there's, like, we do sort of add a section or keep, if it's, if it is net neutral, we'll keep a section there if there's a tight section headed into first grade in particular, because in first grade in particular, we tend to get new enrollments. But yes, these sections would have been tight like that the previous year, so I watched those very closely when we were doing buffer zone assignments because those grades don't get new buffer students at all because they need to be able to accommodate one more student if somebody were to move into that area. I would have had reason to believe that we were going to stay under 25, for example, in fourth grade at Bishop, based on the numbers when we were building the budget, and we managed to stay under 25, but just barely.
Thank you. Other questions? No other questions to report? Okay, thank you very much. We now move to the consent agenda. Okay. Is there a script for this?
There is a script.
No.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, on paper.
It's on paper.
Oh, on paper. No, I got it, I found it. All right. But thank you for recognizing that I need to sit.
Well, I'm here by the desk.
Yes, you are. Okay. So all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of this, a school committee subject requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Warrant number 2606391625 for $1,355,397.29, and the, and the school committee meeting minutes of September 11th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Exton, second by Mr. Carden. Any discuss, there's no discussion. So it's a roll call. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That's unanimous. Okay, Subcommittee and Liaison Reports. Budget is not, the chair is not here. Does anyone want to give a report for Dr. Allison Ampe? Anybody want to? Mr. Carden or anybody? No? No report? Okay. Community relations, Ms. Gittleson?
We met last week. We don't have another meeting on the agenda, but we will need to appoint another Human Rights Commissioner in December, so we'll have that.
Okay. Curriculum instruction assessment accountability, Ms. Exton?
We have a meeting on October 7th at 3:30 p.m.
At 3:30?
3:30 p.m., yeah.
Yep. Facilities, Ms. Morgan?
No report.
Okay, thank you. Policies and procedures, Mr. Schlickman?
We've got to get the policy from, you know, two weeks ago back on the agenda for first read. Anticipate, members, that we're going to have to have a couple of meetings in the foreseeable future.
Okay. Arlington High School Building Committee, Dr. Holman gave the most important report. We have an event on October 25th. If you'd like to volunteer, please don't be shy. We'd love to have you volunteer and help out. The building project is coming along fine. I mean, you're, you're out there maybe seeing what's going on in the high school, outside of you, out, been outside in the fields?
I have a little bit, yes.
Okay, so the fields are getting there. The practice field's going to be done soon. I don't have, I forgot the date. Any liaison reports? Any announcements? Any future agenda items? The next meeting, I'm remote, so Ms. Gittleson's going to run the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I meant to tell you. Well, I can run it, but it's going, while we talk, yeah, it might be better, I think, if you, because I'll be like in a Zoom thing, and I won't see the room or something, you know. Okay. Any, any, any future agenda items? Nothing? Okay. Do we have an executive session? No, there's no executive session. Okay, so we have to have another meeting next week, possibly. We're going to do that by, by working through Ms. Diggins? Okay. Okay, so now we need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Exton, second by Mr. Carden. Thank you very much. We're going to do a roll call. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yeah.
Too early for Mr. Schlickman.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman votes yes. It's a unanimous vote. The meeting is adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody. We made it through.